The time is 6:15 PM. I call to order this special closed session of the City of Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. You can join us in person at 1330 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, or you can join us via Zoom on the information provided on the agenda. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vouters. Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Here. Item three is Ex parte communications. Members, please review the agenda. Do any members have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing no hearing none. Now the time is for public comment. Any member of the public that would like to comment on items on the closed session agenda can do so for two minutes, seeing no members of the public here with us. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
No mayor.
Thank you very much. Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, we will be taking items five through seven and sub items in closed session and reporting back out. The time is 6:16 PM. We are adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Clark, the time is, okay. Madam Clark, the time is 7:34. Okay. Madam Clark, the time is 7:34 PM. We have returned from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you mind porting out?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. There was no reportable action taken in closed session today.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, the time is still 7:34. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clark, the time is 7:34 PM. I call to order this special meeting of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. You can join us in person at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, or you may join us via Zoom using the information provided on the agenda. At this time, Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers. Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Here. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Madam Clark, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, please review the agenda. Is there any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, thank you. Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make an item on the consent, uh, make a comment for, and I'm on the consent agenda and items not on the agenda, can do so now for two minutes. Seeing and hearing no, uh, seeing no members or of the public at the podium to speak. Madam Clark, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers.
Can you please promote them and give them two minutes to speak?
Bill Shaner.
Good evening, Emeryville City Council. Am I coming through all right?
Yes, we can hear you. Please continue.
Fantastic, and thank you for the two minutes to speak. I would just like to thank everyone who took the time out of their evening to come out today and participate in local politics. Bravo to you. You're doing a lot more than the regular constituents are. And, um, I'd like to applaud you, but I'm not going to applaud. I would like to ask the city council to please put forth a resolution disavowing any support for the terroristic nation of Israel, which is an illegitimate state stolen from Palestinian land in 1947. And since 1947, they've been doing everything they can to push the Palestinian people out of that land, um, including going over and literally stealing homes from families with children and forcing them out onto the streets to be homeless with their actions. The settlers are just going in and demanding that, nope, this property is mine. They're getting support from the Israeli military, booting children, women, men, civilians. Populate, they're not booting out militant populations. This has nothing to do with the whole Hamas situation. And, um, the Israeli Defense Force has, for a long time, they've never signed the Geneva Convention, Israel has, and they've been using white phosphorus as well, which is against the Geneva Convention and considered a war crime. It causes long-lasting damage and harm to people. They've been using this on men, women, and children, civilians specifically. And I think that this is abhorrent. These actions should not be condoned by any person, nation, state, however you would like to phrase it. And, um, yeah, no, I just think it's absolutely horrific that the world turns a blind eye to the war crimes that Israel commits and has been committing since its inception in 1947.
Thank you for your comment.
City to call for a complete abolition in.
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah. I, uh, I, I agree with what the last person just said. Um, and I think we can get a lot of insight on why the IDF and the nation of Israel act so harshly upon the people of Gaza. If you refer to their holy Talmud, which is the law book that they go by, religious Jews, Yebamoth 98A says, "All non-Jew children are animals." And this is prevalent in the last, in one of the videos that's circulating online of the IDF members bragging about shooting the genitals of Palestinian children as if it's some kind of trophy game. Um, Sanhedrin 57A, "When a Jew murders a non-Jew, there will be no death penalty." So when a person is raised learning this type of curriculum in their religion, it gives the person a type of, uh, can't do no wrong attitude when their religious books say that what they're doing is all right by their God. Kethabath 11B, "A man who engages in intercourse with a girl less than three years of age has done nothing." Shabbat 116A, "Jews must destroy the books of Christians, i.e. the New Testament." Baba Messiah 115B of the Talmud, "The non-Jews are not humans, they are beasts." And we can see this in the way that the IDF treats the Gazans and all the other people of all the other countries that they control. Um, in the Book of Zohar, Toldoff Noah 63B, "When the Messiah comes, every Jew will have 2,600 slaves, 2,800 slaves." Um, they've, they've already taken the people of Palestine as their slaves. They're doing what they will with them. Um, also in Gettin' 57A, they say Jesus is in hell boiling in hot. All of the media companies are run by Jews, our disgusting, perverted, quote-unquote, entertainment in Hollywood is run by Jews, the satanic music industry, especially the rap music, is disgusting and satanic. You can see it everywhere.
Please remove the speaker for disruption. Can you, Madam Clark, could you hold for a moment?
Yes.
I just want to note for any public speakers, moving forward, the City Council welcomes comments, including criticism about the policies, procedures, programs, and/or services of the city, or acts of, or the missions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The City is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that the city staff regularly attend City Council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act, i.e. statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. I hope everyone online heard that. You will be removed if you violate that policy. Madam Clark, the next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, there are no, oh, there is one new speaker online.
Rex.
Good evening. I just want to say that niggers aren't human and all Jews are cakes.
Please remove the speaker for disruption.
I have to put them in striped pajamas and gold stars. Let's get honest day's work out of them fuckers for a change. Camps, or we'll make them lamps.
Public comment is now closed. Item six is the consent calendar. Members, please review the consent calendar. Would any member like to pull an item off the consent calendar for further discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. There are no action items. Madam Clark, the time is seven forty-six P. M. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clark, the time...
Madam Mayor, request for, request to ask a question.
Member Bouters.
Since the meeting is, for the City Council meeting is scheduled for seven sixteen or after that time, I would like to ask if the Mayor and the Council would consider taking the regular meeting and its action items first so that we can dispose of that business.
Members, is there any opposition to that change?
None.
I support.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clark, the time is seven forty-six P. M. I call to, I call to order this meeting of the City Council. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format. You can join us here in thirteen thirty-three Park Avenue in Emeryville. You can join us via Zoom and the information provided on the agenda. Madam Clark, I will now ask for you to call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Present. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion?
Member Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to take item ten as the next item of business and then continue the calendar as called for.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. I will take public comment at this time on the consent agenda. Any member of the public that has a comment on the consent agenda or items not on the cons, not items not on the agenda can do so now for two minutes. We have no speakers in the chambers with us. Madam Clark, do we have any speakers online?
No, Mayor.
Public comment is now closed. Members, please review the consent agenda. It is items ten point one through ten point twelve.
Motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. We'll go back to item four, Special Orders of Day, Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, proclaiming the month of March twenty twenty-four as American Red Cross Month. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, we recognize the compassion of people in Emeryville and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas the American Red Cross was founded in May eighteen eighty-one by Clara Barton, and this year marks the hundred and forty-third anniversary of the Red Cross, and whereas the Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to provide compassionate assistance afflicted by personal, local, or natural disasters, and whereas people have counted on the Red Cross for the information and skills they need to be safe at home, work, school, and play, training people in life-saving skills in CPR, first aid, fire prevention, and water safety, and whereas with over sixteen hundred volunteers in Alameda County, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to two hundred and twenty-six disaster operations in twenty twenty-three, received twenty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-seven blood donations, and one hundred sixteen blood drives from donors throughout Alameda County, and provided a hundred and, seven hundred eighty-eight local individuals and families with fire prevention training and supplies, and whereas the American Red Cross installed eight hundred seven smoke alarms, and three hundred thirty-two homes were made safer through the Home Fire Campaign, trained twelve thousand one hundred seventy-seven citizens in first aid, CPR, and AED, and trained three thousand one hundred sixteen people in aquatics and water safety. And whereas for over a hundred years, United States Presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian mission. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, and because it is not a government agency, the Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that the month of March twenty twenty-four is proclaimed American Red Cross Month in the city, and I encourage all residents of Emeryville to reach out and support the mission of the Red Cross proclaimed by the mayor of City, the mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, March fifth, twenty twenty-four. And we have someone here to collect this. Richard. I invite you to say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Richard Faitman. I'm a volunteer with the American Red Cross. It's a great honor to accept this special proclamation from the City of Emeryville declaring March as Red Cross Month. Our work is powered ninety percent by volunteers, along with generous financial donations and blood donations, community partners, and people trained in vital health and safety skills. Of course, we were always looking to add additional volunteers to our team, but Emeryville citizens pull more than their own weight in terms of their, their work with the Red Cross and their provision of volunteers. The proclamation already shares a few highlights of what we've accomplished this last year, so I need not go over that again. I would like to point out that our Red Cross volunteers are on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to large and small disasters, apartment fires and home fires. The support of volunteers is critical as large disasters like floods and wildfires grow in frequency and intensity. We are always working alongside city council, city government, county government, and community partners to provide sheltering, feeding, and recovery to those affected by disasters. The Red Cross, of course, holds blood drives across our county each day where blood donors roll up their sleeves and, and help patients in need. In Alameda County, we have worked to expand education and outreach efforts to increase blood donations from African-American and Latino donors. It is simple to make an appointment at redcrossblood.org website and to find a convenient blood center near you. We are also committed to serving our military families with their emergency situations, including financial assistance and emergency communication services. We have also assisted families in reconnecting with their loved ones around the world through the Restoring Family Links program. I'd like to mention that the Red Cross has a number of mobile apps that you can put on your cell phone, providing information about first aid, preparedness, and earthquake disasters. You can install them from any of the iPod, iPhone, or Android phone stores, and I do recommend that you look at these because they're quite interesting. On behalf of the American Red Cross, we thank you for this proclamation, but most of all, we would like to thank you and your city staff members who have worked closely with the American Red Cross over the years to be a better-prepared city for all types of emergencies or future disasters in our community. Thank you.
Item five, announcements of commission and committee vacancies, Madam Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and Council. As you know, we have an open recruitment for several of our advisory bodies. We have received the number of applications for the number of vacancies for the Planning Commission, the Housing Committee, and the Commission on Aging. For the Parks and Rec Committee, we currently have three vacancies, and we've only received one application. We've received no applications for the Economic Development Advisory Committee, which has one vacancy, or the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. We have one vacancy there and have not received any applications. Application period closes on Monday, March the eleventh at five P. M., and the application's available on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Item six, Councilmember Special Announcements and Reports on Meeting Attendance. Does anyone have any announcements? Vice Mayor Mora.
Just a brief one. I attended last week the California League of East Base Cities. There was a presentation, or talks, rather, by Tim Grayson and Lori Wilson, local Assembly members. One issue of note that they wanted to highlight was that the California state budget situation is quite dire, and they advised any cities with dependent revenue streams on a state, from the state, you know, funding whatever programs or projects to take a hard look at those and either fight for them or plan on how to make do without them, because there are, a lot of these programs are on the chopping block to make the, to help with the budget deficit. So that's just some awareness for city staff and my fellow council members.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mora. Member Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. In, in follow-up of that, thank you, Councilmember, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Mora for mentioning about the budget of the state. I did attend a meeting of the Fire Advisory Commission, the first one that I attended that was, I believe, last month, but I think this is still relevant in context of what Vice Mayor shared with us. At that meeting, the chief informed us that we, they had applied for a federal grant, and I think that may be one of the revenue streams that our cities could start looking into more seriously.
Thank you, member. Any other announcements? All right. Item seven, City Manager Report. Mister City Manager.
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Members, item eight is ex parte communications. We don't have any action items this evening, but does anyone have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Item thirteen, Department Head Reports.
Thank you, Mayor Welch. This is Community Development Director's Report on the Planning Commission Actions Taken at the February twenty-second meeting. We had five members present of seven, or, sorry, of six. There's one vacancy on the commission with Member Martinez absent. The commission reviewed the General Plan Annual Progress Report, which includes the Housing Element and Successor, Housing Successor Report for calendar year twenty twenty-three, and made a motion to recommend that the City Council approve that report and, and it's submitted to the state unanimously, five, nothing. This is scheduled for your consideration on March nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item fourteen, Future Agenda Item Requests from Councilmembers. Member Pryforce.
Given tonight's vitriol, I do believe that it be prudent for us to revisit having an official statement or resolution regarding Gaza, and so that's what I put before the body for a future agenda item.
Is there majority support? There is not majority support to place on a future agenda. Any other future agenda item requests from members? No? Member Pryforce.
If there are any more, if there are no more future agenda items, then I'd like to place on the future agenda items, discussion on the Pledge of Allegiance being recited as a part of City Council proceedings, and I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there majority support to place on a future agenda? There is not.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clark, the time is eight P. M. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clark, the time is eight P. M. I call to order the City of Emeryville's Accessor Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format. You can join us here in person at thirteen thirty-three Park Avenue here in Emeryville, or you may join us via Zoom using the information provided on the agenda. Madam Clark, I'd like to note...
but I think this is still relevant in context of what Vice Mayor shared with us. At that meeting, the chief informed us that we... They had applied for a federal grant. And I think that may be one of the revenue streams that our cities could start looking into more seriously.
Thank you, member. Any other announcements? All right. Item seven, city manager report. Mr. City Manager.
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Members, item eight is ex parte communications. We don't have any action items this evening, but does anyone have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? No? All right. Item 13, Department head reports.
Thank you, Mayor Welch. This is Community Development Director's report on the Planning Commission actions taken at the February 22 meeting. We had five members present of seven... Sorry, of six. There's one vacancy on the commission with Member Martinez absent. The commission reviewed the General Plan Annual Progress Report, which includes the housing element and successor... Housing successor report for calendar year 2023, and made a motion to recommend that the city council approve that report and it's submitted to the state unanimously. Five, nothing. This is scheduled for your consideration on March 19. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 14, future agenda item requests from council members. Member Pryforce.
Given tonight's vitriol, I do believe that it be prudent for us to revisit having an official statement or resolution regarding Gaza. And so that's what I put before the body for a future agenda item.
Is there majority support? There is not majority support to place on a future agenda? Any other future agenda item requests from members? No? Member Pryforce.
If there are any more... If there are no more future agenda items, then I'd like to place on the future agenda items a discussion on the Pledge of Allegiance being recited as a part of city council proceedings. And I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the good republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there majority support to place on a future agenda? There is not.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clark, the time is 8:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clark, the time is 8:00 PM. I call to order the City of Emeryville's successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format. You can join us here in person at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, or you may join us via Zoom using the information provided on the agenda. Madam Clark, I'd like to note that... Oh, no, not all members are still present. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders is absent. Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Present. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Madam Clark, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders is absent. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, are there any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none. Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda can do so now for two minutes. As a reminder, the city council welcomes comments, including criticism about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city or acts or emissions of the city council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes on the orderly conduct of a city council successor... Successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that the city staff regularly attend city council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act, for example, statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Seeing no members of the public here with us in chambers, Madam Clark, are there any speakers online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed. Item six is the consent calendar. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would any member like to pull an item off of consent? If not, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval for the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders is absent. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Madam Clark, the time is 8:02 PM. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.